Does he know? Councilors, take your seats, please. Good evening and welcome to the February 9, 2015, meeting of the Revere City Council. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll Club of the Members, Councilor Rego.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Ganaso.
Here.
Councilor Haas is absent. Councilor Morabito is absent. Councilor Novoselsky is absent. Councilor Patch is here. Councilor Penta is absent. Councilor Riordan?
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Powers.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present.
I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the other individuals who are here. We have Mayor Dan Rizzo with us. Superintendent Goodwin. Chief Doherty. Superintendent Dr. Dakin. Lieutenant Ruggiero and Sergeant Janino. This meeting is not just only a meeting in the Revere City Council, it's a meeting called to give the residents of the city an update on what is happening with the storm and what preparations are being taken.
Approval of the journals of the meetings held on January 5 and January 12, 2015?
Motion approved. So ordered.
Calendar item number one, joint meeting of the utility companies to discuss double polls.
That will be continued to the meeting of the 23rd.
Calendar item number two, presentation by Roca.
Continued.
Continued hearing on the refunding loan order.
That will remain in committee.
Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Councilor Ganaso.
Because of the storm, obviously, we were having a Subcommittee meeting for appointments earlier today, but in lieu of that, and we knew that these individuals are all reappointments, I don't find any need to prolong it. If anyone has any disagreement with that, we will go forward. And it reads as follows, that the reappointment of Mr. Dana Bradjifoni, 40, 223 Proctor Ave. Revere, to the Board of Assessors. The others, reappointment of Ms. Kim Hanton, 78 Hay Street, Revere, to the Board of Health. And thirdly, is reappointment of Kenneth Hager, 47 Orvis Road, Revere, to the Planning Board. If there aren't any objections from members of the Subcommittee, members from the Council, I ask that we take these all at once in and vote favorably on their appointments.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as described by Councilor Ganaso? Councilor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ganaso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas is absent, Councilor Morabito is absent, Councilor Novoselsky is absent. Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Penta is absent. Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to the Regional Emergency Communications Center inter-ministerial agreement and approval.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is just the IMA that we need signed in order to go forward. It's, you know, it's basically procedural, you know, more than anything. We know we've been working on this now for five years, and I believe this is the last piece to the puzzle, so, you know, I'd appreciate a vote on it. I'm not sure if... My mic's not on?
It's on.
Looks like it's on. It's green. So, I'm not sure if it needs eight votes or if it's simple six. Okay, so, you know, I'd appreciate, if you can, I know you've all made a great effort to get here tonight, you've got seven people, if you wouldn't mind taking it up, I'd appreciate it.
So, Mayor, any Councils have any questions?
Mr. President.
Council Zambudo.
I think five years is long enough to wait for this. I think we should move this forward and let's get this thing open.
I agree 100 percent. Call the roll, please.
Shall the City Council approve the agreement by and among the city of Revere and the town of Winthrop for the Metro-North Regional Emergency Communications District and Dispatch Center? Councilor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ganaso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas is absent, Councilor Morabito is absent, Councilor Novoselsky is absent. Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Penta is absent. Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the agreement has been approved. The late motion presented by Councilors Rego and Riordan that city ordinance 8.16.080, clearance around fire hydrants be amended to include the following: Property owners within 10 feet of any fire hydrant within the city shall be responsible for removal of snow from fire hydrants. Snow must be cleared within a radius of three feet from the center of the hydrant in a path three feet wide made to the street. If snow stops falling during daylight hours, property owners will have until 10 p.m. to remove all snow from hydrants before being liable to a penalty. If snow stops falling overnight, property owners will have until 10 a.m. to remove all snow from hydrants before being liable to a penalty.
This is going to be ordered to a public hearing, but Council Riordan?
Thank you. I'd actually defer to Councilor Rego, because he was the author of this motion.
Councilor Rego.
First, thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, after the tragedy last week of a fire on Reservoir Ave, we found out that there were reports of up to five hydrants either being blocked or not being shoveled out. And I think that upon looking at the city ordinances relative to fire hydrants and the clearing of fire hydrants, it was not clear how snow would be treated. And I think that this will, this amendment will hopefully start the conversation about how we want to proceed. The current, I want to remind everybody that the current ordinance says that, you know, any type of obstruction is, will be fined with a $300 fine. There is no, nothing specific to snow. And I think that looking at the best practices of what MEMA and some other organizations talk about in terms of a three-foot radius and a three-foot path to, a three-foot wide path to the street, is a start for the conversation of what we want to do. I know that there are going to be enforcement issues, and I've already heard from a few colleagues about, you know, the instances of the elderly folks who may not be able to clear out their hydrant. And I understand that there are going to be those issues, but we need to put some kind of focus on this issue. I know this is something that everyone talks about as we have these snow emergency meetings, and we mention that we need to clear out hydrants. But I think codifying some of the best practices in our ordinances would be a good first step. And I do, you know, want to just recognize that there are going to be instances where people may not be able to do that, may not be able to clear a path and be able to have a three-foot radius. But we need to have something, I think, on the books that says at least what we should be doing. You know, this current event, the last two weeks, have been really unprecedented in terms of snow removal. And I know many people have hydrants that they can't even locate, they're looking on Google Maps to try and find a hydrant because they don't know where it is. But for everyday snow clearance and removal, we ought to have something on the books that is clear for, a clear rule for what people should be doing. And I welcome the conversation. It would be remiss to mention that, you know, this is maybe part of a bigger conversation in terms of snow removal, but I think this is a good first step, and I hope that we have further discussions in committee and we can talk about the details of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rego. Council Riordan?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Before I discuss this matter, though, I think it would be appropriate at this point to stand and have a moment of silence for Mr. Dennis Toomey, who passed away in that fire. Thank you, Mr. President. As to the ordinance itself, you know, I don't want anybody to indicate, I don't think, and I would defer to the chief on this, that this wasn't the cause, the lack of a fire, it certainly wasn't the cause. I understand that the fire was going pretty strongly before the firefighters were even able to get there. So, no one's blaming this, but I think we have to look down the road. It's only a matter of time. If firefighters can't get to fire hydrants and fire hydrants are frozen because they haven't been cleared, someone will die, or we will lose property, or something will be, we'll be sorry about that these fire hydrants weren't cleared if we don't do something about it. I know that we've discussed this morning about tagging the fire, putting the necessary apparatus on the hydrants to make them visible, which certainly will be a lot of help. But, so we absolutely have to put this ordinance into effect. And some people say that, well, maybe it's not enforceable. I don't really care. I think it's more, it sends the message, it sends the message. And one thing that I'm sorry to say, I've observed in this whole issue with the last two or three weeks of snow, is that we seem to not have the sense of community that we really should have about dealing with issues about parked cars, access to roadways, snow shoveling, and dealing with all those issues. It seems to me that it's, in times of semi-crisis like this is, we really need to start coming together more as a community. And I, and it wouldn't be surprised, I wouldn't be surprised if we really need to have a discussion at some point on how to better handle times like this. Because frankly, some people might view this as an aberration, but with climate, global climate change, I think we can possibly expect that we will have more winters like this in the future, and we need to be ready for them. So, I'm, you know, I think the mayor, I'm sure the mayor will take leadership on this, but I think the City Council ought to, we have to sit down and start considering a number of ordinances to make it more, make our handling of these situations more facile and, most importantly, create a better aura of public safety. And as the superintendent has discussed, school issues. I mean, we have, we have snow that has, that have prevented children go to school, that if it had been handled, if we could find a better way to handle it, if people were more willing to cooperate in their, in clearing their walkways and especially near the schools, we might not have had to close all those days. But I really do think we need to have, it's too late for this year, but I think we really do need to have a discussion. So, next December, when this comes around, we're all on the same page, and not just the city officials, but also the people in the community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Riordan. Council Ganaso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly think this is worthy of discussion. We spoke on Friday, and a young lady proposed something I thought was very beneficial. We should probably think about having a program, adopt a hydrant, and that was offered out. And I think that makes sense for community activity and a sense of pride in our community. I've been serving the city of Revere for many years, and I can see in front of some of these homes and these hydrants that we're talking about placing a responsibility to clear them, the faces of the individuals that live and reside in these homes. And I know for certainty that they cannot physically do that. And I think if we create another arm of bureaucracy by making an ordinance that's unenforceable once we put the, all the players together, I think we have to have common sense where it dictates to help us along this. Does that suggest that to do nothing? I don't suggest that at all. And I suggest that very strongly that we have ordinances on the book that suggest that we should clean our sidewalks. But we also have ordinances on the books that say, you can't put that snow in the street. Okay, you tell me where I put it. And, you know, in the great world, in a, if it was a perfect world, if one were to live in Lexington, where they have tremendous yards, in Middleton, in Linfield, where they have all these properties, we can displace snow and take it off the public sidewalk. Again, serving this community for many years, I look around and I see many, many areas, there's nowhere to put it. And, you know, and add insult to injury, again, we have cars parked on sidewalks because there's no place to put them. You know, and, okay, it makes sense to tell everybody, you've got to go take your car and put it in the MBTA parking lot, that, we could come up with something like that. But we have to give people an opportunity, not just a couple of hours before a snowstorm, we have to give them an opportunity, like months in advance, to educate them to the fact that we have to come up with a proposal or a program to be beneficial to all. I had an incident on Bossum Street, right around the corner from where I live, and I represent that area. We had a car fire today. We have a displaced car that's been there with snow all over it, with a lynch sticker on its back, which I know that doesn't belong in Revere, and it's been there for months. We had a fire truck that was stuck, we had a truck that was going down there to take care of them, a tow truck got stuck. Officer Janino had to come to the aid of, in rescue of those vehicles. We're in a situation here that's very, very serious and very, very delicate in terms of how we approach it. And I know people's nerves are getting on end, and mine is too. I've been out there all day for three days. At my age, I mean, you know, I don't profess anyone to go out there and do what I'm doing, but it's a yeoman's job, and I don't see anybody who's going to come by to rescue me. So, I've got to go out there and do it. I don't want family members to come by and put themselves in jeopardy. But I think that we have to have common sense when we make these ordinances. I think that we have to think about what we're charging people, what responsibility to do. Do they have the ability to do that? I mean, this is a heavy, heavy situation, and I've gotten some calls from people that are very, very concerned, and they're passionate about what they're saying. And I try to attend to the business of the nature of what they're requesting, but I'm a realist. I tell the truth, and I tell them exactly where it is. You know, we've got people laboring out there like you wouldn't believe. I see the plow falling by, he looks, he looks like he's dead to the earth. I mean, these people are working, they're out there working and doing their job. And contrary to other people thinking that they're not, they are. And if you traverse the streets and check, you see them out there doing it. But there's so many other parts of this piece that come in, private plowers, people shoveling snow on the back on the street, and there's so many parts that go into this, how does one take care of it all? And I just think that, well, I opened this up for debate, and I think this is a great motion to get the ball rolling, but I think we have to give months of preparation to get people educated to the fact that this is what we have in mind, and educate them to what we need to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Ganaso. Council Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a good motion for the, most importantly, for the purpose of education. I'm not sure it's enforceable, that we're going to make the residents dig out the hydrants. However, I agree with my colleague, sometimes it's better to have a, something on the books that reminds people of how important it is to dig out hydrants. And I see that the deputy chief just come in with a, an identifier on hydrants, and that's very important, because when we get three or four feet of snow like we just got, you don't know where the hydrants are. And we, I'm going to put a motion in tonight to purchase these, or the equivalent of what's going to be shown here tonight for our hydrants, because it's a matter of public safety, it's a matter of life and death. I mean, it's just unbelievable. I'll take the bait from my colleague to my right, you know, I've been around long enough and old enough to know when there was global cooling, and then it changed to global warming. And then when that didn't fit the narrative, because the last 18 years, it's cooled again, now it's global climate change. I'm not buying any of it, but that's only one man's personal opinion. Anyhow, I think my colleague tweaked me with that and just wanted to let me take the bait on that. So, anyhow, we definitely have a philosophical disagreement on whether the earth is warming, cooling, or having global climate change. However, we are getting buried with snow, and I like to think that's part of the global cooling. But anyways, the ordinance changed, I think we'll have a public hearing, and then probably we'll end up in my committee, and we'll tweak it. And again, I don't know that it's enforceable, but I think that we've got to have a more serious plan in place as to how we get these hydrants cleared out in a timely manner. And I think by identifying them, that might be the best way to go about it. Because I know if I had a hydrant in front of my house and I saw that thing sticking up out of the snow, it would remind me I need to clean the hydrant out, because I want to be safe, God forbid I have a fire, I want them to be able to get to my hydrant. So, I think most people, if they're able and not elderly, they will clean out the hydrant without this, but perhaps this will give them a little push. So, for that reason, I'm in favor. One other point my colleague to my right made about that we're not a good community, I've been, no, I'm saying that we're not the community we'd like to be when we're all together. I've been laid up with my back with a sciatic problem, and one of my neighbors didn't see me out during the storm, and not only did he, not only did he clean my walkway and driveway, but he knocked on the door to make sure I was all right. So, there's still a lot of people that are looking after their neighbors, and, but perhaps some of the newer people that have come into the city are not quite tied into that sense of community yet, and maybe we can push them in that direction. Anyways, I don't know if it's appropriate now to get this hydrant identifier up here, or it's up to you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Don't you put the motion in for the meeting of the 23rd, and then we'll send it to committee?
If that's the way you'd like to do it, I can certainly put a verbal motion in right now, that the...
If that's your choice, fine.
Yeah, that the mayor facilitate the purchase of the identifiers or the markers, whatever you want to call them, for all the hydrants in the city.
Fine, that's fine. On the motion? All in favor? So ordered. Council Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought we were still on climate warming, as a matter of fact. I would hope our representatives in Washington would come home once in a while, and maybe they'd see that it's quite cold here and snowing. But other than that, it was a shame on the fire on Reservoir Ave, he was a friend, the past. I, and when I was reading, when I was watching the news, they didn't mention the fire hydrants, and also that a truck was blocking one of the fire hydrants. Now, I hope that truck was fined or towed or what have you. There's just no need of that parking in front of a fire hydrant. My take on it is that, like, I have a fire hydrant in front of my house, you know, and it's just part of my job for the last, since I moved in there after the blizzard of '78, that I take care of that fire hydrant. And if I, you know, if I have a fireman who lives next door to me, if I don't get out there fast enough, he's there. So, we have no problem on Johnny Road, that's the only fire hydrant on Johnny Road. And I just hope it ain't, I hope it works. I did, after the first storm, cleaning out my area, I did notice that 15 feet towards, let's say, an avenue, there's a big mound of snow, and it blocked, it actually blocked the view, the fire, you know, the fire hydrant's on the sidewalk, so it kind of blocked the view of the fire hydrant. And I stood out there, and I don't have to worry about, I've got two of the best plowers, I shouldn't say this, because they're probably stealing from me. Joe Fester and Michael Verul do a fabulous job on Johnny Road. And I did notice a strange vehicle coming down, a big, big back hole. And I stood out there, and I'm pointing, I'm pointing, you know, at the hydrant, and he's looking at me like, but I know he couldn't see the, he couldn't see the hydrant. So, I stayed out there until he got by me. So, I went in the house, I called the fire station, and I talked to the call taker, and I asked, do you have one of these flags I could put up? And she says, no, I'm sorry, we don't, we don't have any. But to be honest with you, even the one that you have there, Deputy, I don't, I don't even know if that would, they would be able to see it with that one on top of the fire It's really, it's really a terrible problem. And as far as the shoveling out the fire hydrants, I just think the people might need a little more education. You know, our generation's growing up, you know, my father did it, everybody, it was always something you did, you clean out the fire hydrant. And maybe these people just don't know, you know, that that's their job. If, if, you know, somehow we can contact the homeowners that have fire hydrants in front of their houses, that they could, Mr. Mayor could appoint somebody to either notify by mail, or that it's their duty to clean out the fire hydrant, just for the reason it might save their house. So, that's about it. I mean, I just, you know, it's just a shame that last fire. And I want to thank the Fire Department for doing a fabulous job, again. It's a tough thing. But, so that's it, Mr. President, I just, I think I said enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Patch. Council Janino?
Thank you. I think this is a great motion on behalf of Councilors Rego and Riordan. You know, I think an important factor to this, too, is really just being aware of your surroundings, and being aware of where the hydrants in your neighborhood are, and being aware of who your neighbors are. And if you know that the neighbor 10 feet away from the hydrant maybe is elderly or has something that prevents them from shoveling the hydrant, help out, because that hydrant that's 10 feet from them is just as helpful to you in any one and a half mile radius of that hydrant. So, it's not only that homeowner right there, it's the whole street that's really responsible. So, help each other out and really be aware of what's around you. I think it's a really great motion, and I commend the councilors on it, because I think it's something we desperately need in the city, because even the contractors that are plowing have got some of the hydrants buried in. My grandfather's been plowing the hydrant on Malden Street for over 50 years, and it took him over an hour to find it the other day. And he's shoveled that same hydrant out for years and years. So, we've definitely never seen anything like this, so we really need to be on top of it and maintaining it, and doing the best we can to make sure our community stays safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Janino. I'd like to recognize that Council Morabito was with us, and he'd like to speak on this motion. Council Morabito?
Thank you, Miss President. I commend Council Riordan and Council Rego on this motion. We did have a similar motion, I'm not sure if this was mentioned, because I came in late, we did have a similar motion years ago that was taken off the books because it was lacking detail, and it was, they were unable to enforce it. My concerns are determining an alternative, if there's someone disabled within the radius of that hydrant, or someone who is elderly. I think, once, if we go into further discussion, like we are going to, I think... I think, once, if we go into further discussion, like we are going to, I think we'll add some substance to this motion and some detail and make it really strong, so we can identify where this, where, identify the issues, identify how we can correct it. So that's where I stand with that.
Thank you, Counselor Morabito. This is a great motion, it's a great idea. In fact, I spoke to Chief Doherty a couple of times in the past week regarding this. They have them in a lot of other cities and towns, to name a few, Wilmington, Tewksbury, they're coming right out of the snowbanks. I was today looking for the hydrant on the Ponson and Sagamore Street, and it took me half an hour to find it because the snow was so high. We found it, and finally we were able to get a plow to come by and knock off some of the snow so we could finish clearing it out. As far as the cost, if we lose three or four hydrants in a year from plowing, that would more than make up for the cost for these rods that identify where the hydrants are. I'll give you an example, down on John Avenue on North Shore Road, the hydrant down there is, you can't see it. And that's because Mass Highway comes by, they do a great job of plowing, but when they're doing that, they're covering some of these hydrants so that, you know, they're not available to the person, firefighter, showing up to in an emergency. And I think as far as putting these rods on, maintaining, things like that, I know Mayor Rizzo has put a great neighborhood organization into place downstairs in the basement of the City Hall. They do a tremendous job, and I think they could also help identify people in the neighborhoods that would want to take responsibility for some of these hydrants. With that said, I'd like to call up the deputy to, just to show the people who are watching at home what that rod looks like and what it entails. Chief Doherty, thank you.
Thank you. Just for the fire situation, it was so disheartening, Deputy Chief Bright did extreme valiant effort to get his, both his uncles, but the hydrants did not, were not a factor in that. The fire had such a big headway on us. But he would have lost both uncles if he wasn't working because he knew exactly where they were. And we wouldn't have got to the person, the uncle in the basement, but he was able to. He crawled in, he's to be commended, the first arriving firefighter's to be commended, because even after they attempted to search, they had to set up water curtains because we were going to lose the houses on either side of it. But the, we only had one hydrant that was partially buried, and that was an Everett Engine Company that reported that. We had a hydrant nearest to the house was frozen. And that happens quite often, if you don't know, during the winter, and it's no reflection on the system, it's a reflection on, it's an actual cause of the system, of the water not flowing enough, or if there's the least bit of a leak in the shut-off at the hydrant, it will freeze. The bigger mains, the 10 and 12-inch, we don't see it as much, even though it did happen on Broadway as well. But we don't see it as much because the water's constantly flowing. Some of the side streets, the branches, they're down to six or eight inches, and some of them might be down to four, two inches. But the water doesn't flow as much as readily, and we get more apt to get them there. But we plan accordingly for that, that the apparatus goes in, and they plan that if the first hydrant is going to be working, we pay people stage to a second hydrant. One, the Malden Engine Company was the one that found the pickup truck with a plow parked right on the hydrant. They were all set to damage the truck, to put the line in there, but they started yelling in the street, and I guess the, it was a local person, his house, and he ended up coming out and moving the truck. But again, it was delay. So there's a total of five hydrants that fit into the fire that we had problems with. But it did not play into the fatality itself. But Deputy Bright and his men will be commended by me and for their actions that morning. I've been contacted, but relative to the hydrants in general and the motion that you have, I won't speak to my personal opinions relative to it. I'll tell you, as the, as the fire chief, it'll, we have something on the books under Chapter 148 about burying hydrants. And that's generally for private plow operators, or people that are sometimes that unconscious, they'll dig out their driveway and throw the snow on the hydrant. But this is under Chapter 148, a fine for that. Again, you have to get the police to witness it, and it's a very tough thing to enforce, but it's under the Mass General laws. School Committee McGuire has contacted me and asked for a list of our hydrants. We have probably about 900 hydrants in the city. We have a master list. Four years ago, we ran out and GPSed every hydrant for maybe even more, for the new rec center that, so have all those located, and they'll all be on our mapping system. So he wants that list to utilize with the, some of the children's in the schools, that they could actually adopt certain hydrants in their neighborhood. There is a program with the Department of Fire Services, and Boston Fire is doing it, about adopting a hydrant. We did that relative to the painting of hydrants through the mayor's office a few years, two years back, and it worked out to a certain extent, so some of the people actually painted their own with their own little motifs. And we come by with the prisoners, and we painted right over it. That didn't sit well, but we know now not to do that again. But that, I think that adopt a hydrant program will work. This marker that I have on me, Brian Kelly brought that down to me today, the DCR installed these on the, on the hydrants on the Boulevard and Ocean Avenue, two years ago. And it's, I think this is the best for us, because that on the hydrant, sticking up, is considerable. There are bigger snowbanks, we have today. But as Counselor Zimbuto says, sometimes it's an impetus, the person's more apt to see the poles sticking out of the snow and say, "Oh, I better get that hydrant," versus the hydrant being buried, and then you just forget about it, you don't even realize it. And the mayor and I were driving around the city for the last couple hours, and I saw so many hydrants that were buried, it distressed me. But our firefighters are going out every day, twice a day, six pieces of apparatus, and they will do the whole city until we know all the hydrants are dug up. Now, we've been doing it since the blizzard hit, they've been, they go out every day. And they have, when they come back, they have a map and they mark it off for the next shift, which streets they covered. So when the next, the shift comes in, and they go, and they say, "Okay, we're going to hit the following neighborhood." We hit, some of them we have to hit three and four times, because the plows do. We understand that they go by and they, they have to clean the streets, and they do bury the hydrants here and there. And we try to keep up with it. But we go on the basis, when we go to a fire, when the firefighter jumps off at this time of the year, they jump, get off with the, what they call a hydrant bag, that has all the tools to open the hydrant, put on the valve gate, and a shovel, in the event that he has to dig the, dig the hydrant out. I mean, that's a normal. We carry 750 gallons of water, and we increase that from the old days of 300 gallons to 500, now to 750. Because 750 has been proven to put out just a little more than a whole room fire, and that gives us that basis. The fire we had on Hitchmont Street, we had hydrant trouble there as well. We had two hydrants, and they used tank water to tank water to tank water, different apparatus, to hold the fire in check, the same thing, so it didn't hit the explosives. So I think these are going to be tremendous. I did ask for them some years ago, I got shot down right away when I told everybody they were $20. They're now 29, so we could have saved some money. But they're at least, DCR, Brian told me they're $29. I thought they were a little less. Granger sells them, they are on the state bid, and we do have 900 hydrants. So let me do the math real quick, it's a good hunk of money. And I'm sure we could go around, we could, the other thing on the hydrants, just, it just hit me, is because the mayor, we were out in the junior ROTC, I know, I wouldn't want to add to their list of things that they do well, but they go around, the Snow Angels, you know, digging out elderly and people like that. Hydrants could be another thing, that they could hit certain areas. But I think School Committee Man McGuire wants to get that thing started with the schools, so it might be good. But this will be great. I think it'll help us a great deal, coming down a street, we're more apt to spot the hydrant right away, we know we have to dig it out, and we can get to it right away. So with that.
Chief, thank you very much for your...
Mr. President, could I just ask one question?
Certainly, Counselor Riordan.
Chief, you said there's a, we have a map with, a city map with the hydrants designated?
Yes.
Is that something we could publish on the city's website?
Thirty-eight pages long.
Thirty-eight pages, well, if we could, even if we could somehow get it down to a ward by ward, or even precinct by precinct, I would think that would be something.
We're actually, I will, I don't know how that'll get onto the city website, but I'm sure it can be done as a separate folder. But the firefighters, I didn't know this till last week, they're actually, when they're going out, in the old days, you just knew, you had to say, "Okay, that hydrant is at the corner of this street, blah, 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 blah." And some of the old timers would call up, and forever, hydrants on Squire Road would get buried on 10 feet of snow. And there was this old captain, Eddie Janiak, or Billy O'Brien, Lieutenant O'Brien, you could call them up, and they could tell you it was eight paces from the telephone pole. And we'd go eight paces from the telephone pole, stick a pipe pole in there, bang, you hit the hydrant. Meanwhile, we were digging for, you know, an hour, we weren't anywhere close to it. But all the firefighters are taught that they have to know their hydrants in their district. They all have a book, we have it on mapping now, computers are out of service right now, but that's all in the new, I know, mobile data terminal, and it's going to be even better. And a new system comes in, we have it in our dispatch system now, that wherever address you go to, it lists the nearest hydrants, so they have it better out here as well. So we're very cognizant of that, and I really believe this will help us one a bit. It is, you know, a little piece of change.
Chief, when you stop and figure, if you lose four or five hydrants through plowing, the 26, 27,000 dollars is nothing.
We lost two on Ocean Ave the other day, and we had already had four done, but Donnie told me we're up to 10 or 12.
Yes.
Yeah, 10 or 12, we might double that amount these days, you know, 10 or 12 hydrants. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of them, so, all right. I'll come back up when the mayor finishes.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll be starting the meeting regarding the storm very shortly. Thank you. Counselor Patch, and Counselor Orego next.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, I'm just a little curious, my area, Watch 6, has been developed the last, it used to be all farmland. Do you feel that, I noticed that they're awful spread out the fire, the hydrants. Is it adequate?
Yeah, generally, generally, they're within 500 feet of each other, generally. There are some a little further. We carry 1,000 feet of 4-inch hose to make a lay, you know, proper hose lay. And if necessary, like this fire up on Reserve Rav, I think we use three pumps. One of the secondary hydrants that we use from the corner of Winterbaba Broadway, I said it was a quarter mile, it's actually more, it's almost a half mile, but we use 1,000 feet from three different pumps to get up the hill. But we do that relay pump on a regular basis for any large fire. But they're around, generally, they're around 500 feet away, that's how they're laid out. We lay out, we try to get a hydrant at the beginning of every street, every other street, and then in the middle. So if it's not at the head of the street, it'll be at the middle in the end, and if it's at the head, it'll be at the head in the middle. So we try to lay them out that way.
Great, thank you.
We always lay into the address.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Orego?
Just a quick question, Mr. President. In terms of the GPS mapping, has that been linked to our GIS system here?
Yes.
Okay, because if it is, I mean, in terms of getting it on the website, we could, you can have a Google map that would map from the GIS, would map each hydrant, and I've seen it on a couple of city websites where they show, they kind of put a pin drop on each fire hydrant, and you can zoom in, and people could go on the city website and see that.
Yeah, I gave them all that, you know, we had somebody physically go out and attack every hydrant in the city. Then we gave that to Tri-Tech, that was doing the new computers for the fire and the police, and it kind of, one didn't talk to the other, some BS like that, you know. And eventually they got through that, but I know, we gave it to MIS people, but I started to say, and I didn't finish, the firefighters themselves are actually using Google Earth Street View. And when they go out, and even though the hydrant's buried, they go on Street View, and they say, "Oh, no, it's right here, it's right in front of this door," you know, and it's amazing how much that does help.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Late motion presented by Counselor Morabito, that the mayor instructed Capital Waste to communicate with the DPW whenever streets are skipped along its trash removal routes, especially during inclement weather. This will allow us to have good communication with residents and provide proper notification and measures to be taken.
Counselor Morabito?
Thank you, Ms. President. For the most part, I submitted this motion because I feel during this weather, often we have good indication when the, when the trash, when Capital Waste cancels trash completely, but when they resume regular business, there are specific streets that are not, where there is no trash removal, because the weather, the volume of snow, or the size of the street, the trash removal truck cannot fit down the street. In that instance, I think we should give the citizens some courtesy and be able to let them know if their street is skipped along the route. And I think if Capital Waste communicated and relayed the message to DPW or the mayor's office and let us know and said, "Hey, listen, these are the streets we're gonna, we're gonna skip today because we weren't able to get our vehicle through the street." This way, how we can take proper measure, whether it's a reverse 911 call to inform residents, these particular streets, there will be no trash removal because the vehicle cannot, the trash vehicle cannot fit down your street, therefore, here are the proper measures, this is what to do. And I think we owe it to our citizens to do, to give them that courtesy.
Thank you, Counselor Morabito. On the motion, all in favor? So are you. We have no further business for our regular meeting, and the regular meeting is going to be adjourned until February 23, 2015, at 6:00 PM. However, we have a team up here from Emergency Management, and we're going to start off with the mayor, and any councilors have any questions, from any of the individuals, this is the time to do it. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First of all, for going forward with your meeting tonight, I know that we had closed all municipal buildings today, and, but I know you were concerned to carry out the council's business tonight, and our DPW crews were good enough to get cleaned up around the building, hopefully good enough so that you all could park. And I appreciate all of you being here to not only conduct your own business, but to talk a little bit about the storms that we have had so far over these last couple of weeks. I know a lot of the things we're talking about now are probably things that, but for this 70 inches or so of snow that we received, maybe we wouldn't be having this conversation. I guess in some ways, it's probably good, not good that we've had all this snow, but it forces us to talk about the future and what we really should be doing with respect to not only snow removal, our fire hydrants, our parking, but a whole host of issues on how we can improve the way we deliver snow removal services in general around the entire city. This has first, let me just say, and I know that you councilors receive phone calls just the same way I do, and by and large, our residents have been extremely patient, and I deeply appreciate that. It makes our jobs much, much easier. I know it makes the people's jobs you see sitting here behind me that much easier, when people understand that this is not a severe problem, this is a regional problem. In fact, maybe, I'm not sure if any of you know, but the governor just declared several counties, including Suffolk County, he just declared a state of emergency, which hopefully will lead to some funding and some relief for all these snow plowing and removal operations that we've had to undertake. It's going to cost quite a bit of money. But I have instructed Don Goodwin and his crew that this isn't the time for us to be talking about money, it's the time to be talking about making the city safe and getting us back up as best we can so that people's lives can get back to normal. It hasn't been an easy six months. We had to deal with the tornado back in July, and now record snowfall here this winter. So our residents have had to go through an awful lot, and I appreciate, I can't say it enough, their patience. it enough, their patience. The motion that you passed tonight for those markers for hydrants, that, you know, is something that I will absolutely approve, it, you know, it makes perfect sense, particularly when you add up the number of hydrants that have been damaged, not just from a pure cost basis, but what about, you know, with respect to public safety. The Fire Department, let me just say, did a tremendous job at the fire up on Reservoir Ave, Seventy-nine Reservoir Ave. And while unfortunately, Mr. Toomey could not be saved, it's amazing how many other lives potentially that were saved because of the response that they made under very, very difficult conditions. As you know, that's a very steep hill, it was extremely, extremely icy, and the homes up there are very close together, so for the Fire Department to be able to only have minor damage to one house to the right, and pretty much that's it, they did a spectacular job, and I couldn't be more proud of them than I am. We're gonna continue, I hope all of you, and I hope the public respects the amount of work and the amount of time that our Public Works crews have had to be out there over these last couple of weeks, and our private contractors. I know everybody, a lot, I shouldn't say everybody, a lot of people think that, you know, plows are far and few between, but with the amount of snow we have, it's just the accumulation, to try to keep up, when they go down your street and go down the next street and do their route, by the time they get back to your street, you are gonna have snow. And as I say, you know, patience really is the word of the day, and it's gonna have to be the word of the month, because this is gonna take quite a while for us to get dug out from this. But we are gonna continue, this is gonna be a continuous, round-the-clock effort. We have, as Chief Dougherty just alluded to, we were, we drove through virtually every single part of the city over the last few hours to assess what the conditions are, not just for this storm, but what the cumulative effect has been. And we know that there is definitely serious work that needs to be done, and we're gonna continue to do that. And I'm trying to stay in as close communication as I can with all of you, whether it's by way of face-to-face meetings, or conference calls, or emails, or text messaging, I'm trying to make sure that you have all the information that I have. I think it bears noting, and again, some of you may know this, but for the edification of anybody who may be tuned in and watching this, the MBTA will not be running service tomorrow, so anybody that uses the T, it is not going to be running tomorrow. So please either make alternative arrangements or consider working from home, because the T is not going to be running. With that, I won't go on anymore, Mr. President, there's some people that came here with me tonight that may want to update you with respect to their particular areas.
I think that the two of the questions that are on everyone's mind, you know, in the city is, first of all, are the kids gonna have school tomorrow? And Dr. Dakin, I'm sure can come up and address that. And number two, the trash pickup, and I'm sure Superintendent Goodman can address that, so I'd like to call Dr. Dakin up if we could. Dr. Dakin?
That's fine, I'll let them answer those questions. Well, folks, it's really been a radical storm over the two-week period. We have canceled nine days of school, and I do believe that civic responsibility does not end when you're older. In fact, I think civic responsibility should be an example for younger people, and I think your motion is critically important. I think we have to count on people pitching in their fair share and community working together, and there really aren't excuses for everybody's civil responsibility. If we wanna build a community where everybody works and helps each other, and we can do that, then we would be able to have had school on a couple of those days that we had to cut off. And I think that's something that we have to work on. We're looking to have school on Wednesday, there will not be sidewalk shovel now that they're buried so deep, but if there was a culture in the community that a small swath of area to let a kid or an adult be safe walking, and it was done from the start of the storm season, then that's something that gets maintained all the time. And I think we owe our children the responsibility of setting that example, elderly and disabled alike, to figure out ways to work together and to build community so that those jobs get done, we pitch in for each other. I know there are people in this room that pitch in and have helped people out, I've done it myself during the storm, that's something that we have to do, and I hope that that motion flies through, because it would be the start of building civic responsibility. We shouldn't be doing it from the JROTC up, it should come from us down, and I'd like to see that. So my hope is that this is a learning experience, and we can take from it good constructive ordinances that will be able to be enforced, that will lead to safer streets for our kids and our elderly alike. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dakin. Dr. Dakin, the question about school.
There is no school tomorrow, and we're hoping to be able to go on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Dakin. Superintendent Goodman, with regard to the trash pickups?
The trash pickup presently is on holiday schedule, John, it's one day late, it's gonna be moved up a day.
So Monday would be?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and tomorrow would be tomorrow also?
No.
No, okay.
That was last, so it's on a, it's on a regular holiday.
Okay.
See, last week, there was a little bit of confusion, 'cause they had canceled for two days.
So we did it on one day, I know.
So they did it in one day, correct.
Thank you very much, Don. Anything you'd like to add?
Well, you know, the, just getting back, in the next couple of days, to the next week, ten days probably, we'll be doing a lot of snow removal in some of the neighborhoods. And I can't stress enough, upon a comprehensive plan for parking bans and not parking on sidewalk during snow operations, I've been an advocate of this since the day I took the job, I just don't think there's the world to do it. I think now that it shows that we don't have a comprehensive plan in place, the problems that we're having. I know Gene's been going around all day long, there's some streets that are very tight, gonna have difficulty getting the fire trucks down there, if we had a comprehensive plan in place, that would not be the case, and that goes to the trash collection too, if the trash truck can't get down that street, then the fire truck can't get down that street. So the problem we're having now, and, you know, we're having the same problem, the residents are having the same problem, I don't want to, you know, paint all the residents with the same brush, because it's just not the case. It can be a few that can make it difficult for everybody else of throwing the snow back into the street. We've seen properties that are huge driveways, backyard, you go out there, there's a blade of, you couldn't find a flake of snow on that property, and they swear up and down that they never threw anything out in the street. And monkey see, monkey do, what do I do with my snow, so everybody just throws it in? And this is the complaints that we get back, the snow goes out in the street, the streets aren't even cleared, the storm is over, we should be done. Trucks have to go back time and time again, fill the voids in, taxpayers, it costs money. You know, we're gonna spend a million dollars on this snowstorm in the last ten days, it's quite counterproductive to the taxpayers, they're the ones picking up the tab in the end. We need to put a comprehensive program in place with parking bans, no parking on sidewalks, and it's in the best interest of the residents and city we care for public safety, as Chief Dougherty has come up here and delivered to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I'm gonna call up next Chief of Emergency Management Services, Chief Dougherty, if he has anything you'd like to add, any questions any of the councils may have.
Yeah, I, I.
Well, they're all working hard.
It's a hip, it's a hip, yeah. It goes with the weather, our age, I'm not sure. My wife says I have dementia too. You know, we're gonna get two to three inches maybe tonight, so you know? We're at, right now, we're at sixty-seven inches in the last seventeen days, there's just nowhere to put it. We're, it looks like at least four to six inches on Thursday, maybe more. The weekend's gonna be a frigid, freeze over again, four and five degrees. I don't think that'll play into any factor, it'll just, as long as we don't get any, we don't get any, we're not gonna get a meltdown, so it won't freeze everything to be ice blocks, make it more difficult for Donnie and his people, but for the most part, keeping up with it, I think that they're doing good, it's kind of a real difficult situation they're in, you all know that. Obviously, some contractors are better than others, and like he says, the mayor and I discussed this at length, relative to a real comprehensive plan for the future, everything from making certain streets an emergency for the day, you know, we'll notify people, hey, look, tomorrow your street, nobody's parking on it, we're gonna come in and wipe out the street. People, it's kind of a no-in-between with people, they say, we didn't plow the street, and then when they plow the street, they're mad because they plowed in the driveway. And you can all see how those driveways now have extended eight and ten feet into the street, so they have to do it, we're down a one lane on ninety percent of the streets in the city, and it just can't be. We'll get down any street, trust me, the fire truck will get down there, we'll take off a few mirrors on the way, but, you know, they'll get in there if we have to. We won't take all the apparatus down there, but we'll get in there and drag hose if it's necessary. But relative to emergency management end of it, we spoke with, I spoke with Donnie and the mayor, and I requested two large front-end loaders from Mima, and it's, I asked earlier, and I actually thought the governor had set the state of emergency, and the answers I was getting, they were gonna get them to us, put us on a list, we'd get them tomorrow, and then I found out it was on our nickel, so I was a little distressed at that, 'cause they cost, the two of them, about ten thousand dollars every twenty-four hours. Winthrop did it, Winthrop got them on the last storm and got them for forty-eight hours on Mima, and then picked up the tab after that, but they used them quite a bit. But since he's declared the emergency, we're on the list already, so hopefully we'll get a couple of them tomorrow, or tomorrow evening maybe, and it'll be on Mima's nickel, and they'll help Donnie and DPW do snow removal. And that's the key, we've gotta hit some hard, some streets really hard and actually remove the snow from them, because we're never just gonna be able to widen them, that, you know, with a regular plow, the pickup trucks aren't gonna do it, you have to have very huge equipment or front-end loaders. We're not in any danger, any flooding or wind damage, so we didn't have any power outages, and that aspect, we're fortunate. Questions?
Counselor Regal?
Thank you, Ms. President, I have a quick question on snow removal, and Donnie might be the best for it, but I know the governor, I read something that the governor was urging cities and towns to apply for a waiver to allow snow removal into bodies of water, and I don't know if that's something that we're contemplating or not, but I know Lowell, Salem, and I think Lynn have all applied for and got waivers.
We have been quiet with the mayor's office, we just don't have a body of water we can run it up in.
I mean, it would be a last resort for us, Brian.
We can put it on the beach.
Beach, right. We do have a snow field that we have access to, that's pretty huge, and, you know, Suffolk Downs is offered their property to us at no cost. So I think rather than put it in, we'd have to talk to them anyway, rather than dumping it into the harbor, I think we would continue to use the snow field until we ran out of space.
We actually looked, you know, there is no place where we can get to dump it in the water.
Right, there's no way to get down there, right?
And I don't think that we could do it down there.
All right.
That's about the only spot we can really dump, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Regal?
Thank you, Mr. President, to Donnie. Donnie, as far as when, if and when, and I understand it's not high on the priority list to remove the snow at this time, but once you start doing that, my only suggestion would be that certain intersections where there's a right-hand turn, such as Park Avenue here, we gotta take, we gotta widen the area there so that there is a right-hand turn where they can go right on red there, because what we're experiencing is Park Avenue in the afternoon is backed up all the way to Alston and sometimes further, and the other area that I'm familiar with is actually in Ward Three at the Revere Street-Broadway intersection, where it's essentially one lane and there's supposed to be a left-hand turn lane.
A week ago Friday, as everybody is aware of, we did remove all the snow from Broadway up to the other side of East Mountain Avenue. We do have plans, I'm gonna sit down with the mayor and discuss, just, I think we need to take a really comprehensive look at it, because obviously on Broadway, Revere Street, all the major thoroughfares, anything around the school that the kids might be, have to take a high priority, so as opposed to doing whole sections of streets and everything, I think we have to take a hard look at it, go out, look and see what the most danger is. Squire Road, there's some very difficult areas, Marlin Street, Washington Avenue, Revere Street, Winthrop Avenue, and Beauchamp, there are innumerable amounts, the snow out there is incredible. If you've had the opportunity to drive around the city, there are literally snowbanks as high as twenty feet high on some of these corners, and we do plan on removing them. People's homes that people didn't see, we have areas where things got dumped, some of our dead-end streets and some of our cul-de-sacs, we've already started removing snow from, so we'll be looking into that, Stephen, and if you have something that, you know, you see is obviously a public safety issue, you get it right to us and we'll move on it.
I just wanna say a couple of things, you know, we all get calls from people that complain about, we're plowing in their driveway, we're plowing in their walkway, and unfortunately, that's a necessity in many cases. Our primary responsibility is making sure that ambulances, police, or fire vehicles can get into these neighborhoods without trouble, and also getting our kids into the schools without any problems, so those are, as far as I'm concerned, two primary responsibilities, and there may be some inconvenience, so be it, that's the way it's gonna have to be. Everything isn't perfect. I know that DPW, our police and fire departments, have been out there straight twenty-four-seven, working diligently to make life safe for everyone in this community. And off the mail, would you like anything else? Anybody from the police department have any comments?
Mr. President, just while we're talking about the storm and now getting more on Thursday, I think it is worth mentioning, I don't think it's an immediate problem for a lot of people, but particularly those with flat roofs, and I'm thinking even with respect, I know Dr. Dakin's still here, but, you know, with respect to schools and in particular the high school, right now, this is a very light snow, but at some point in time, it's gonna start to warm up, whenever that may be, we may get rain, and there's gonna be a problem with that, with, again, the amount of snow that is on these flat roofs, so if people have access and can get somebody to start to get some of this snow off the roof, they're gonna be that much ahead of the game. There's gonna be a lot of ice dams that we're gonna have to deal with, it's gonna be a real messy transition from all this snow into the spring, so the more we can do right now, or the more people can do to start to get that snow off of their roofs, in particular flat roofs, they're gonna be better off, because we don't wanna get in a situation where we're starting to deal with collapses or, you know, serious leaks, so I just wanted to mention that, I don't think that was brought up during this meeting.
No, I think that's an excellent point, really. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone from, Lieutenant, do you have any comment? No, okay. Well, with that said, this will conclude the meeting of the Emergency Management Team, and hopefully, we won't have to meet again like this this year, but if we do, we'll deal with it. Thank you.